The Thursday, April the 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM, Withfield Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. First item, establishment of a quorum. And we have that. Second, approval of the agenda.
I'll say move.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote. George.
George, aye.
Keith Jones, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Schmidt, aye.
Aye, Jones.
Litton, aye.
Consent agenda, next minutes of the regular meeting of March the 13th of 2025. I need a motion.
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving on. All right, I need a roll call vote for the agenda. George.
Aye.
Keith Jones, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Schmidt, aye.
Jones, aye.
Litton, aye.
Next, public hearing to consider the request of Mr. Michael Waller for a special exception permit to allow a home stay use for property located at 1340 West Main Street, which is the Better Way Warehouse, tax parcel 41A-7-44-7B in an M1 industrial zoning district, and to approve a deviation to the required parking regulations located on the parcel identified as tax parcel 41A-7-44-14B. Staff presentation by Mr. Woods.
Thank you. Through to the right. You should each have in your packet a copy of the staff report. I'll go through the highlights quickly. The permit request is for a special exception to operate a home stay, and in this case, one without the requirement of owner occupancy in an M1 industrial zone, and to deviate from the minimum off-street parking requirements at that location. There are several uses proposed for the site. The proposal is to use the first floor as a retail space and the basement level to be used as storage. And then the second floor is proposed to serve as the home stay, and the floor plan calls for three bedrooms and a small loft area. The remaining part of the site will be various parking and access for the normal operation of the site. Going through the site conditions, historically, this building has a lot of significance to the town, being it was constructed, according to the tax records, around 1940, and has been home to a number of significant businesses for the town. One of the things we've noted, as we've talked to people through the community about this structure, not just in the context of this application, but generally, I've heard through the years, a lot of desire expressed that this building be preserved and that a new use be found for it. It has a lot of memories for people in town. The building and the other facilities occupy most of the site, and so there's not very much room for parking, which hence the need for the parking deviation. Environmental conditions, since the, you know, in the past few years, the, there's been some fairly significant cleanup of the site, removal of brush and overgrowth and that kind of thing. The existing gravel parking lot that is located on the Moose Lodge site has been recently regraded and additional gravel put in, so it's, makes a pretty good surface for the parking There are some existing trees along the property line to the southwest, as well as in the stream bed just to the northeast of the property, and that provides a reasonable amount of screening for the parking that's existing on the site. The, our Department of Engineering and Public Utilities reports that the wastewater and potable water service to the site is adequate for any anticipated use. There's a dwelling, not right next door, but on a, to the southwest of the structure. It's owned by a local property management firm, and that dwelling is in the M1 district likewise. There's a couple of mostly vacant lots, and then the Moose Lodge to the north, and detached garage that serves a home across Monroe Street on the adjoining properties. Across the street, on Main Street, there's a small publicly-owned parcel, a triangle, that makes up part of that intersection, and beyond that is Grayson's Restaurant. Some of the past, you know, present and future plans, the applicant has been working on the building for several years, and I don't know the exact amount of time, but they've done improvements such as replacing the roof and the windows, and basically doing the critical work to stabilize the building and keep it weatherproof in preparation for the work they're planning here. Architectural plans have been submitted for this renovation of the building, and some of the plans that you see in your packet, the site plan in particular, come from those architectural drawings. The plan is to operate the retail space from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Wednesday through Saturday. And something to note on that is that kind of avoids the peak times that the Moose Lodge is used, which makes this shared parking more viable. At, as of today, we have not received any public comment on this application. Going on quickly to staff recommendations, the two proposed activities that require the special exception are the home stay without owner occupancy, and then the deviation from the parking requirements. Generally, home stays in residential districts, our current ordinance requires that the owner live in the unit and be on premises, basically during the rental stay. We have not historically required that when a home stay was in a business district, or B1 or B2 districts. However, those districts list home stays as a permitted use, but the M1, for some reason, that was never included as the, on the list of permitted uses. Now, it is quite similar to a use that is allowed in M1, which is hotel motel use, but our definition of hotel and motel specifically excludes small facilities with less than 13 spaces. And so, it was determined that we needed to go ahead and require the special exception. Staff feels that this use is sufficiently similar to a hotel or a motel, which would not require the owner to be in the building at the time, and so we have no opposition to approval of that home stay use. On the issue of the parking deviation, the applicant is requesting some relief from the normal requirements that would be applied to typical developments around town. Currently, in our ordinance, in the B2 DT zoning district, which covers downtown, we allow parking deviations that can be approved by, administratively, by the zoning administrator, but these do not apply anywhere outside that zoning district. Since this site is an historic building that occupies most of the parcel on which it sits, the issues that are at play here are very similar to what we face downtown. And in the downtown district, we allow on-street parking and parking in public parking lots to apply to the needs of a particular site. In the applicant's plan, they have provided six onsite parking spaces, including one that is an ADA van-accessible space, and there are 14 spaces provided through a shared agreement with the Moose Lodge, and then they projected nine on-street parking spaces. However, when I looked, went back and analyzed it based on our parking standards, there was one space that they had identified, which is actually designated as a no parking zone. However, there were four spaces available very close to the front of the building that they didn't include. And so, their plan listed 29 as the available spaces in total, but by my calculation, they actually have 32. So it's a little better than what they had presented. The parking deviation is very similar to what we would allow downtown, and it, we would recommend that it would be approved, however, we've recommended two conditions. One is that the shared parking agreement be fully executed and recorded with the court, at the courthouse before the, the use would be allowed. And the other is that the areas around the site that aren't part of the driveways, parking, or other buildings, that all those areas be landscaped and maintained. Because this is an existing parking lot, there's no new significant construction of parking, the normal planting of trees to screen the parking lot would really not be triggered by the development that's happening here. But we would want the basic, you know, whether it be grass or shrubs or ground covers of some kind to maintain the integrity of the site. There is a site plan included in your packet, and on there, you'll find some labels. The area around the number one on the plan is the area where the shared parking agreement would take effect. Where you see the number two, those are three separate areas where some onsite parking. The one with the gray shading is the paved area where the ADA parking space would be located, and there'd be two spaces below a deck at the back of the building, and a couple more spaces back near the gravel parking lot, actually onsite, but close to the Moose Lodge. And then out front, you can see the area labeled three, that's the nine spaces that they had identified. The one furthest to the left on your page is, actually overlaps with a no parking zone, but then there are four spaces further up the block in the other direction that are available. All right, that covers that. There's also some photos in the packet, in case you're not familiar with the building, to familiarize yourself with what's going on. Any questions? Anything I can answer? The applicant and the owners of the building are here, by the way, in case you have questions that they might need to respond to.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak? If no one does, then we'll close the hearing, the public hearing.
I think, I'm not sure if non, sorry, I thought someone wanted to speak there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm Wendy Brooks, and I'm the owner of the building. And I'm still researching the building, but I have, from the 1895, I have where the woolen, the with woolen and knitting mill was this building. And I know they were in business in, in 1895, and they had to have built the building and done business before that, so I'm researching. When, so it's a historic building. It's a beautiful building, and we're trying to restore it and, you know, give it some new life. So I appreciate your consideration for everything we're trying to do.
Well, we appreciate you, that you're restoring the building there, because I think it's starting to look good on the outside, for sure, so we do appreciate that as well.
Well, we have our structural engineer here who has plans for it, let me tell you, okay? So it's going to be there for another 200 years. All right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, I'm curious. The owner didn't apply for the special exception permit. It looks like probably the contractor did.
Yes.
I've, how come? I've been on this board for 13 years, and I think this is the first time I've ever witnessed a special exception permit, the applicant being the contractor.
I think it mainly was a matter of convenience, since he's local and here in town on a regular basis. It's not unheard of.
Okay.
And we do have a
Owner consent.
A letter of consent that was completed and notarized by the owner, so.
Does anyone else wish to speak at all? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, next, I'll need a motion to make a recommendation to the town council to either approve or deny the request of Mr. Michael Waller for a special exception permit to allow use of the property located at 1340 West Main Street, the Better Way Warehouse, Inc., tax parcel 41A-7-44-7B, for a home stay unit without owner occupancy in an M1 industrial zoning district as presented. So that requires a motion and a roll call vote. And please state that exactly as I read it.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion. I would move that the planning commission make a recommendation to the town council to approve the request of Mr. Michael Waller for a special exception permit to allow use of the property located at 1340 West Main Street, the Better Way Warehouse, Inc., tax parcel 41A-7-44-7B, for a home stay use without owner occupancy in an M1 industrial zoning district as presented.
Need a roll call vote, George?
Aye.
Keith Jones, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Schmidt, aye.
Jones, aye.
Litton, aye.
And we're also going to need a second motion to make a recommendation to the town council to approve or either deny the request of Mr. Michael Waller for a special exception permit to approve a deviation to the parking requirements, as described in Article 16, general provision, section 16, 6 of the Town of Withfield zoning ordinance for the parcel identified as tax parcel
I've got one question, just on the topic. Historically, these things have been provided to the applicant. I think you've changed it to the, to the use, is that correct?
Yes. Code of Virginia requires that special exceptions run with the land and not with individuals.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to create any heartache for, if they went to resell it, or
Right.
Or went a different direction, or whatever.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move, again. That the planning commission make a recommendation to the town council to approve the request of Mr. Michael Waller for a special exception permit to approve a deviation to the parking requirements, as described in Article 16, general provision, section 10, 6 of the Town of Withfield zoning ordinance, for the parcel identified as tax parcel 41A-7-44-14B as presented.
A second. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Keith Jones, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Schmidt, aye.
Jones, aye.
Next item on the agenda is the citizens' period. Is there anyone that would like to speak about anything other than the scheduled public hearing? Okay. Then we won't open that if there is no one. Okay. Other business, and this is simply to schedule this, the following that I'm going to talk about for a hearing, and no discussion is absolutely needed on this. So we're going to schedule a public hearing for Thursday, May the 8th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as possible, to consider the application of Mrs. Donna Leonard for a special exception permit to operate an accounting and tax office on property located at 525 North Fourth Street, tax parcel 41A-1-22-7, in an R2 residential zoning So next would be the consideration by the planning commission to schedule a public hearing. Requires a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, presentation and review of items requested by the planning commission at the March meeting by Mr. Woods.
You first have an item on, on your desk that I left that is basically the definition of accessory structures or buildings, and since this is something we're bringing with you tonight, we figure we can let you take a look at that, and if there's any questions or changes, we'll put it on the agenda for next time. Basically, the changes are in that last sentence that starts examples of accessory structures, and we added a number of examples of the type of structures. Obviously, we can't hit every potential type of structure, but this should give a pretty good representation of what they can be. And also, that we exclude swimming pools and spas and other ornamental water features, and then a reference to the definition of those. Any question, or?
Yeah, I have a question, just with accessory structure, because obviously, there's garages and carports in this, right?
Right.
Because last, at the last meeting, we talked about, and I don't know whether I can bring it up now, but putting the accessory structures on the side of a building, not having it attached. I mean, I have a problem with all the accessory structures being on the side of a house. I don't have a problem with a carport, you know, or a garage or something like that, but, but the rest of it, so I don't know whether that needs to be separated at all, or how I feel about it.
Well, there is another agenda item later on to discuss that
Okay.
particular topic.
Okay.
And so, whether we get to that point tonight, given our time constraints, I don't know, but it is on the schedule to discuss either tonight, or if we run out of time at a future meeting. The next item you'll find left at your desk is a draft idea for our conditional use standards for swimming pools and ornamental water features. And this is based on, there's a document that our building official in the building department has prepared for our citizens that summarize the building code regulations that govern swimming pools, and any other body of water that's artificial and meets the standards of being more, either more than 150 square feet, or deeper than 24 inches. And so those, those are the safety guidelines that would trigger the requirement for the swimming pool code to come into effect. And so, since swimming pools are very heavily and very strictly related by that code, we have to be a little careful in what we restrict to make sure that we are not trying to do something that's contrary to that code. And so you'll see the reference to the building code repeatedly in this draft. And so the things that we're proposing to regulate are requiring that there be a safety fence, which is a basic tenet of the code, and that there be a clear zone from that fence and other obstacles. We've also asked for a minimum setback of 10 feet from adjacent property lines. Now that, you know, in watching the video, it seemed like there was some support for requiring a bigger separation for a swimming pool than, say, a small shed. a bigger separation for a swimming pool than, say, a small shed. And so that three-foot minimum that would have applied in the current ordinance, we're suggesting increasing that to 10 feet. We're still requiring that pools in these ornamental water features be located in a rear yard, and that kind of gets at the idea of being able to fence it off and with a tall enough fence to make it secure, and that there be at least a 10-foot separation between a dwelling or occupied structures. And so that's the summary of what we're recommending, but we'd love for you to take a little time to think about it and see if there's anything I missed in generating this draft. And if you flip the page, the definition for swimming pools and spas is on the next page. And that's where it identifies the size and depth that trigger the building code provisions.
With the standard C1, the way I'm reading it, you would have to have a fence around an above-ground pool?
Yes. The only exception is if the sides of the pool are more than four feet, you know, four feet or more.
Right.
And you remove the ladder when it's not in use.
And I do know that in state code, you can have a, like on an in-ground pool, you can have a retractable cover that actually substitutes the fence.
Yeah. Now, I know that specifies it for a spa, and it would probably have to be a small enough in-ground pool for that to apply. That's going to be something that really is going to be governed by the building official.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, do we want to require more than state code?
Well, that is a question that...
I mean, I don't see why we need to, because these covers that I'm referring to, they're not something you just lay over. It's on a track system, actually. Like, I've seen them with bears on them, and they won't break through. So they're pretty neat, but I was kind of surprised to see the above-ground would need a fence. But you're saying that is state code?
It is. Now, as far as the cover on an above-ground, I'm not certain what the, you know, if that would apply or not, that would be a question for Mr. Spraker. But in the reference that I looked at, unless that pool stands a full 48 inches above the surrounding ground, it still has to be fenced. Now, in some of the examples that you see on the brochure, it kind of gets a little bit of that.
Well, I see the top one, yeah. But like the third one down would be very odd to me that, I would think that one's possibly. I mean, it could go either way. I don't know what the standard above-ground pool size is.
Yeah. Yeah, now if...
I think there'd be a lot of people surprised if they had to put a fence around that third example, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Well, I understand that, but there's a lot of people who do things that don't fully comply with a long time.
I get that as well.
All right. Any questions? If you have more questions, we will revisit this in the next agenda, and if you're satisfied at that point, we can just briefly acknowledge that and move on.
John, they have to go in the backyard and not, it can't go in a side yard, can it, the pool?
I have reflected backyards only because of, you know, basically to match our current. But when we discuss accessory structures, we can also include that in the question of, do we want to allow them in side yards? Most side yards are probably not going to have the space to have the 10-foot setback from a neighboring property and 10-foot setback from the house, but there certainly are cases where there are wider side yards where it might be appropriate. And we can craft the regulation to recognize that if it be the pleasure of this body. I don't particularly have a problem with the pool being a side yard myself, but my sense in listening to last month's meeting on tape was that there was concern that the closer you're putting that noise and activity to a neighboring property, that it might be a problem. So that's why, between keeping it similar to the existing ordinance and wanting to avoid that noise issue, that was what drove me to select this particular...
Wouldn't you still get the noise from the backyard if it was joining another property there?
Well, I'm with you, but I'm just trying to pick up on...
Sure. Because I think there are lots out there for sure that where a side yard would work better for them without a doubt.
Yeah, and it's doubtful that the extra seven feet of 10 versus three is going to make a whole lot of difference either.
Right. I mean, so I don't know how we fix that, but I think there definitely are larger lots out there that would, you know, would work with a side yard for sure. I mean, I understand why most people want it at the back, but there may be exceptions there.
The other option is that, you know, I looked for other communities in Virginia that regulate conditional use for pools. I didn't find any. And a lot of that is because the state building code regulates them so tightly. And so we could also just leave this out and let it stand as it is now with the state building code governing where they go. And in the current ordinance, we treat them as an accessory structure. And since clearly any of these are going to be below eight and a half feet in height, the setback is three feet based on our current ordinance. So if we're happy with that, we don't have to change anything. We can leave pools and spas as part of the existing accessory dwelling, or accessory structure definition.
Fountain is supposed to be in the backyard?
If it meets that criteria of being 150 square feet or 24 inches or more deep.
There are situations where fountains can be quite attractive in the backyard.
But if it's a fountain that's just a few inches deep and less than 150 square feet, it can be. So those little fountains that you see at the garden center would virtually all still be allowed to go in other locations.
Would not be regulated.
Right.
We probably need to add that to the definition. Does anybody in this room want a swimming pool 10 foot from the property line? I would think you would want a larger set.
As long as the diving board starts over.
I mean, because we could increase the setback if you think that's going to be problematic to have, you know, because somebody may put a swimming pool 10 foot from your property line. I don't think I would like that.
Right.
I think the problem, like when I think about it, is like where you could put it, and it makes sense and be beneficial to everyone, and then other areas where, you know, with a really narrow side yard where it'd be problematic. So at every individual situation, we could look at and say, well, yeah, that makes sense, but we got to come up with regulations for everyone, so...
Well, if we keep those setbacks of 10 feet from the property line and 10 feet from a inhabited structure, you know, that's going to eliminate 90% of the side yards in town.
For smaller lots, it will, yeah.
When you say 10 foot from the inhabited structure, you mean the property owner that has the house?
Yeah, their own house. And that's not, I mean, there are places where you can have built pools that you can hop in in the living room, swim out, and be outside. And, you know, this would preclude that type of an arrangement.
Why would we not want it closer to whoever's put the pool in?
Right.
Like, I mean, what's...
Basically, I'm trying to hit issues that the building code requires at least three feet of separation, and that has to do with having an adequate space that someone can walk around it without accidentally falling in. And so basically, I just added a little to that.
Seven feet.
And any of these, these are not standards that I feel overly strong about. If we're going to have conditional uses, these are a starting point.
So with the statewide code, do they regulate where the swimming pool should be or not?
Only in that it has to have, be surrounded by a barrier. Your house can form part of that barrier. If, for example, you have a rear yard that's fenced in and a back door that opens to the pool from your house, you can do that, but you have to have an alarm on that door that sounds for at least 30 seconds every time someone goes out.
Okay.
And as a way to protect little children who might wander out into the backyard and fall in a pool.
But no other regulations of where it can go?
They do not. And so it's probably going to be by default at least three feet because you have to have that three-foot clear zone. And if someone could put a fence there, then that would defeat that.
Okay.
So the state code basically effectively matches our existing code, our existing ordinance.
Right.
Anything else on swimming pools? If you think of something, remember it for next week, next month, I should say. I didn't prepare anything on the next one, which was about parapet walls. I know that discussion came up, and the proposal in the UDO would not prevent someone from using parapet walls, but it would just measure the top of the building to that point, which would have to stay within the, whatever the designated height for each zoning district is, whether it be 35 normally or the 50 feet that if you have the extra side yard and so forth.
You don't think we should add that in there, what it is in the existing ordinances with the four feet above there?
We can add that if you like. However, keep in mind, we're getting some pretty tall buildings. The existing ordinance allows, in most residential neighborhoods, up to 45 feet, that's a four-story building. We add another four feet to that, it's not a problem, but...
I'm just wondered why they had it in there in the beginning then, because, I mean, it's more for schools and that sort of thing, I think, with parapet walls in a residential area, anyway.
Yeah. It normally would be, I, my feeling is that the times that situation's going to come up are so infrequent that, you know, we may have a case with when they demolished most of the old middle school to build the new elementary school, and that's, but that is in an M1 zoning district, which allows very tall buildings anyway.
Right.
So it's, I don't know that it's a significant issue that we're ever really going to address, but I am happy to add the extra four feet if that's the preference of this group.
John, could we exclude it from the height measurement like we do church spires and all those other things?
That's another possibility.
I think that might be the way to solve that because it's barely in for you. So you just say, you know, this is the height requirement, but if you have a parapet wall...
Parapet.
Sorry, I have a hard time. If you have that type of wall, then it doesn't, you would just measure the base of it, and you wouldn't count that in. Would that work?
Right. It certainly would work, because I don't think anyone's going to put up a 10-foot parapet wall, you know? So I think that'd be fine.
All right. We can deal with it that way. And number four is just an announcement, basically, as we get the last of the comments from tonight, I'll be updating the draft UDO to reflect your input, and then sometime in the next week or week and a half, I'll post the draft seven to our website.
Next, presentation comparison and review of the current Town of Withfield zoning ordinance versus a proposed UDO for R2 and R3 residential zoning districts. John?
All right. Hopefully, I'll be able to be efficient at this. I know Elaine was able to get through the A1 and R1 zoning districts last month, but we'll give it a shot and start off with R2. Using our simplified comparison, we'll start off with the lot size. The minimum lot size in our current zoning ordinance in R2 is, starts at 10,000 for a single family and ranges up to 16,000 square feet or more based on how many units are involved in the, you know, whether it be a single-family duplex, triplex, or four-unit structure. And it also is impacted by the type of sewer and water. As you discussed last month, in cases where the private wastewater disposal or private well are in use, the health department has recommended that we require larger lots than what our current ordinance does, and they recommended about the sizes that I've placed in here. So 30,000 for basically if one or the other and a full acre if you're doing both private well and wastewater. Currently, in the R2, there is no direct limit on the zoning or on the housing residential density. Maybe I need a drink of water here so I can actually get my mouth to work. But if you take that 10,000 square foot lot size, and if there are four single families, you're going to have four units per acre roughly, and if you have the four... And if you have, uh, the fourplexes at the minimum lot size for those, the most you could get is about 10 units per acre. And so, functionally, it's regulated to that density. And likewise, in the proposed UDO, uh, we do not specifically limit the density, but based on the reduced lot size requirement for, uh, units that are in, uh, areas served by sewer and water, uh, that would increase to about five to 12 units per acre.
Uh, sorry, John, um, just with that, uh, four to 10 units, I thought it was just four units in the existing ordinances.
That's per lot. So if you have a 16,000 square foot, uh, actually, I think it's 15,000, you can put a fourplex up. And so if you multiply that out till you hit that acre size limit, you're gonna end up with about 10 units total.
And that's in the existing ordinances?
That's the existing ordinance.
Hmm.
Uh, we don't have a lot of fourplexes out there, but, but there are a few.
Right. I didn't see where that said that, and I thought it was just four.
Um...
And thank you for giving us the, the old ones and the new one, so we can compare it there.
So, looking at the old ordinance, in, uh, I'll highlight it on the screen if I can, uh, you can have, uh, so it is 16,000 square feet for a four-family dwelling, or a fourplex.
Okay.
Instead of getting to 10, you'd have to have three parcels.
Right.
Under the current.
Right.
You have to have three parcels?
Four, I don't know how you do, about four, four and two.
Okay.
And so that, that number is an estimate. It's basically, you know, we don't say you can only have 10 units per acre, but if you're gonna follow the development guidelines, that's about where you're gonna be limited Building height, our existing ordinance is 35 to 50 feet with stipulations, and basically those stipulations are, uh, take the form of, uh, as you increase the number of units, you have to, or the number, the, the height, you have to increase the setbacks a little bit. I know there was some concern, uh, last month about the, why it affected the side yards and not the front and rear yard. Basically, the front and, the reason, the thought behind that, uh, which, you know, we can make that change, that's not at all the question. But the thought behind that was our front setbacks and rear setbacks are already fairly substantial. And so, it was less important to make that distinction where you've already got 25 or 30 feet of, of setback in the, you know, just the base ordinance, whereas on the side yard, you're only at 15. And so, that was the thought that led to that. But absolutely, we can, uh, restore that increased setback in the front and rear, uh, if it be the pleasure of this group. The proposed ordinance is the same, it just changes those stipulations. Only real difference is that the increased height wouldn't apply to front and rear setbacks. Any other comments or concern about building heights? Okay, front yard minimum setbacks in the current ordinance, uh, the, the stipulations in the current ordinance are almost unmanageable. Uh, but, uh, basically, in the current ordinance, I need to go out and measure one way or another. I generally do it with the aerial imagery, uh, to avoid trespassing on people's property. But we need to measure the actual setback of all of the existing homes in a block. Take an average, and then, uh, it can't be less than 20 in this zoning district, but, uh, that sets the minimum. It's a, it's very unusual to have an ordinance where the first step is to take an average or make an adjustment. Generally, it's preferred to have a standard setback and then put the clauses that would allow for adjustment under different circumstances. Uh, I can't say why the ordinance was written that way, but, uh, but that's what it is.
Just a second, real quickly there. So one of the things that we were trying to do with the proposed UDO is to make it so that if you wanted to build a house, you could read it and understand where your front setback could be for your new home. And that's one of the challenges of our existing zoning ordinance, is if you look at the language in R2 and R1 and R3, you, sitting in the convenience of your bedroom on your computer, trying to figure out what your front setback for your new home is going to be, will be virtually impossible. So, I mean, I guess that's the simplified way of saying why there's less words. Just wanna give you a minimum front setback, but there could be some consideration.
Right.
Does everybody get that?
But the, uh, front setback can be more than 40 feet?
Right, the, our ordinance currently...
It doesn't allow?
Doesn't allow us to require more than 40 feet.
Right.
Now, if I own a, am building a house, and I want that thing 600 feet back from the road, I can do it.
Okay.
But we can't require you to do it.
Right. Why did they have that in the beginning then? What was the reason for having 40 feet?
Uh, probably to, the, the situation, the way the ordinance is currently written, you have a subdivision. Somebody builds the first house, and they decide, I want it back along the street a little bit. Now, they have set an average, average of one, but now everybody who else who builds is required to use the same setback that they do. And if another one builds it further back, now it, and so rather than this being a standard that we set as a planning commission, it's a standard that is governed by who builds first. And so, uh, you know, there, it's, it's not a, it's not a real good way to, to manage things.
Right.
And so there are a number of neighborhoods where, because of the first few houses were built far back, now 40 feet is the minimum setback for everybody.
Right.
And so, uh, from the subdivision end, we've got a conflict here. Because we require in a new subdivision that the building setbacks be specified. And so, your subdivision that you're working on has a minimum setback on those plats. But, once a few houses are built, this ordinance forces me to go in and measure and compare and, and set something that may conflict with that.
Right.
And, uh, based on state code, we've, by approving a plat, we have given a determination that this is the setback. And now we, our ordinance forces us to change it. This is one of those quirks of our ordinance that may get us in trouble one day.
For instance, if you have a subdivision there, and someone puts the first house 100 feet back, now the rest of them all have to line up with that?
They have, uh, we can't require more than 40 feet. But it pretty much means that everybody has to be at least 40 feet back.
Uh, you talk about existing or the new UDO?
The new, uh, talking about the existing ordinance.
Right. I'm talking about the new UDO.
The new UDO...
If someone comes along and they put a house 60 feet back, do the other people have to line up with it?
No.
Is that what I'm saying?
No. In the new ordinance, uh, we, uh, first set, I'll find the right line here. In R2, the basic building setback is first, it's 25 feet.
Right.
Or, they can use the average of existing, whichever is less, uh, but never less than 15 feet.
What happens if there's nothing there, there's the first house to go in?
Then you got 25 feet.
25 feet.
Right.
So in a new subdivision, it'd never be less than 25 feet.
Right.
Right.
It's your average.
I'm just saying, the first one that goes in, if, if there's no, minute, they could put it back 50 feet, but you're saying they can't, and the new UDO, they cannot?
Yes, they can.
They can put 50, I'm saying, the other houses that follow, do they have to also put it 50 feet?
No.
Because I thought that's what you said, they had to line up?
That's the existing ordinance that...
Existing ones, I see.
And so...
Then what's the point of having but not less than 15 feet?
Well, the...
If you have to...
Basically...
35 feet or more than...
Basically, one of the things that's good about the current ordinance, if you have a neighborhood where, uh, houses are built unusually close to the street, this allows you to preserve that character. And so, if you, for example, uh, Spiller Street between Fourth Street and Wesley Highway, almost all of the houses on that block are built close to the street. And, there's a lot to like about that. And, you know, some people will drive down that street and say, I'd never live here. And other people will drive down that street and see that neighbors talk to each other because they're close and they're, uh, connected, and would gravitate to that street and buy those houses first. And so, basically, allowing that, that, uh, secondary way to adjust the setback allows us to preserve neighborhoods. Without making it, without making the confusing, how do I determine what my setback is, the first rule. It moves that to second place in the process.
Right, but if you're building a brand-new neighborhood and you're the first house, it's 25 feet. It says 25 feet.
Yeah, and in a new neighborhood, you're probably gonna have, uh, you know, it, it's gonna be like neighborhoods all over the country, kind of the same.
But I can see someone building a house who would say, why is the statement but not less than 15 feet even in here? Because I, I'm required to...
Well, the, we have R2 areas that will be new subdivisions, and we have R2 areas that are existing subdivisions where that 15 feet comes into play. And so, it's important to have it there for those older neighborhoods that we wanna keep the character the same, while, uh, kind of giving a standard that we can, uh, that's clear and easy to follow for newer neighborhoods. It's a balance, and the specific numbers can be changed easily. You'll see that the lot sizes and the setbacks are a little bit tighter in the UDO than they were in the current ordinance. The purpose for that was that we were directed to, uh, look at the housing study that was performed. And one of the recommendations was that we reduce setbacks and reduce lot sizes so that we can fit more houses in the neighborhoods. And, and to increase, give a, a tool to add a few houses here and there. Now, uh, we can walk that back if, if we want to, but, um, you know, we'll be trading it off by, uh, making the trade-off of making it more difficult to build homes rather than less.
Um, with the, uh, sorry, I, I don't know if you're getting on to the, the side setbacks.
Well, if we're done with the front yard, we certainly can move on to side yards.
Sorry.
Uh, any other comment on the front yard setback? So let's dive in. The current ordinance, uh, has a, uh, as little as five feet, uh, and as much as 24 feet. Uh, the situation that would allow a five-foot setback is if you have an older lot in an older neighborhood that is less than, I believe, 60 feet wide. And so, with those narrow lots, it allows a little more flexibility to make those lots usable.
That's with existing ordinances?
Existing ordinance.
It's the new one now.
And...
John, do you mind pointing that out in the language? Is it 7.5 yard regulations?
It's, um...
7.3, I think, isn't it?
It's under 7.9 down at the bottom, uh, where the minimum lot width is 70 feet or less, I was wrong, it's 70 feet, not 60. The minimum side yard setback may be five feet, and the combined width for the two required side yards shall be a minimum of 10 feet, provided that, in the opinion of the zoning administrator, the topography and adjoining lot setback allow adequate space between residences to permit reasonable access to emergency personnel in the event of fire or other threat. Uh, and so, basically, uh, some of our old platted neighborhoods that were zoned R2 have a lot of small lots. And, uh, they, they meet the, kind of meet the standard for size, but they're probably a little, uh, undersized from the, uh, but our current ordinance, like our UDO, both allow, uh, existing lawfully created parcels to be used, as long as you can meet all the other setback requirements. And, you know, so any lot that's, in this case, created before 1969, uh, can, and is smaller than the dimensions found in the ordinance for the minimum lot size, can take advantage of this.
That's the existing ordinances in the older neighborhoods.
Right.
What about the new UDO?
It's probably worth adding.
I think so, because there's still older lots out there.
Yeah.
And I think the minimum you have right now is 15, I believe, on the side yard, isn't it? So, I, I think we, we need to definitely have that five put back in for the smaller lots.
The language in 7.98 older neighborhood, does that, that work for you now in how you currently interpret the ordinance?
Uh, yeah, that's fairly, I think we could probably simplify that verbiage a little, but, but it's a straightforward, you know, I can measure the width of the lot, see that it's 70 feet or less, and, and make that judgment, and we do that fairly commonly.
Right.
It happens more in R3, uh, which has the same provision.
Hard to establish the date?
Little bit. Although, we have the benefit of having Billy Anderson on staff, and he can pull this information up very quickly. I really think the date should come out, uh, because if it's a lawful existing lot in a zoning district, I think it probably ought to be. I don't think we should be creating new lots and new subdivisions that don't meet the standard.
Right.
But we've, if we've got a lawful lot, we probably... But we've, if we've got a lawful lot, we probably ought to provide some flexibility.
I mean, I think it should be there for sure. I'm not sure about the date myself, but I think you definitely have that, have to have that 5 foot back in there for the smaller lots.
Subdivision recorded prior to 20... That captures it pretty good.
Yeah, that would capture it all.
Yeah.
Because we, you know, particularly if we have the ability to, you know, moving forward, you know, we're definitely being close, closely watching these standards as we review subdivision applications. And, uh, there haven't been any subdivisions since I've been reviewing them that wouldn't meet the new, the current standard of minimum lot width. All right, where was I? So, currently, the base side yard setback for R2 is 15 feet, with that provision for 5 feet under specific conditions. And we can make this, the proposed for the UDO the same. Now, one thing that I didn't do in the UDO proposal was the increasing the side yard by 3 feet for multifamily units. And so, that's where that, uh, in the old ordinance, or the current ordinance, it can jump up to as much as 24 feet. And that can make it pretty tough to build a duplex or a triplex.
I think it jumps up to 27. It doesn't matter. With the rear yard there, I know the existing ordinances, uh, I'm sorry to go back to the rear yard there, but yours is 25 feet, and for multifamily, they had 33 to 57. Wh- why? Why would they have that?
I really don't know. Um, the, let's see.
If you follow planning circles, a lot of the things that people say is that, back when this zoning ordinance was written, it favored single-family development. They weren't really written at that time.
Right. Yeah, because that seems like a lot for multifamily to go up to 57, whatever.
I, I may have the thought police after me for saying this out loud, but uh, this ordinance was written at a time when, uh, the civil rights movement and, uh, uh, integration of our schools was a big thing. And at that point in US history, many communities that never would have considered zoning saw it as a tool to control who could live where. And if you look at our existing R3 map, you can pretty much see, you know, if you look at just the part of the town that was annexed in 1969, you can pretty much map the African-American neighborhoods by looking at our R3. And so, that was zoned to have all of the apartments, public housing, subsidized housing. And so, you see, those are the neighborhoods that got purchased and demolished and replaced with, uh, public housing. And so, I wasn't around then, don't know the history, but that's pretty typical of history. You know, this was, uh, at the time, what they call redlining, and, and that's kind of how this existing ordinance is, is geared. It makes R3 a tough place to want to live.
Right.
And R1, a place where everybody wants to live, and so, you can map home prices by those, uh, same factors. And, uh, you know, it is what it is.
So, do you think the 25 feet, uh, in the new UDO for multifamily is sufficient setback in the rear yard?
I do. But, um, I am not, I am not so married to it that if, if you would rather see it go back to the, uh, stepping up by distance, I, I wouldn't fight it.
Yeah, I'm not saying it goes to that 57. I'm just saying, I was just asking whether you thought that 25 was a, a good setback for multifamily.
You know, I, there are some multifamily units in my neighborhood. I don't feel like they're any noisier than anyone else.
Right.
Uh, it may have more to do with whether or not you've got kids or a pet than it does how many units are in your
Okay.
parcel. So that's just my feeling. I don't think it's necessary. But, here again, it's, it's the way we've done it a long time, and I am perfectly willing to, uh, agree to any changes you all recommend. All right, we've sort of hit side yards and rear yards. Accessory buildings, I pretty much have kept these the same in every zoning district, and they're patterned after our existing, uh, with one exception. For those buildings that are over 12 feet tall, and this, remember, this is to the bottom of the eve, not to the top of the roof, that's a pretty tall building. And so, I feel like a building of that size really ought to be kept within the building envelope that we would use for the main building. And so, in this case, in R2, that, uh, uh, building over 12 foot tall would have a 15-foot setback, just like the main house does. And I've recommended that kind of throughout the, the various ordinances. Where that breaks down a little bit is in commercial and industrial districts where, you know, we'll talk about this when we talk about accessory structures later. Uh, but this current ordinance may not be relevant for those districts. But it, this mirrors what our, our, every zoning district except B2DT uh, has that same 3-foot, 5-foot, and 10-foot graduated, uh, setback requirement for accessory buildings. And in B2DT, for some reason, they don't even mention them as a use. Probably just an oversight.
With the accessory buildings in the new UDO, because under existing one, uh, says not to exceed 25% of the rear yard, but it doesn't say that in the new UDO, unless I didn't see it properly.
Um...
Reason that changed?
If it did change, it wasn't intentional.
Okay.
It wasn't intended to, um, I think it's actually listed in the, uh, development standards for the, you know, the, the conditional use standards for accessory buildings. It, um, rather than say it over and over again in each zoning district by saying it in the, uh, we only have to say it once, but I, I believe it's still in there.
I, I didn't see it, but I'm, I'm...
But it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in this, uh, development standards table.
Table, yes.
It would be
Be in the definitions.
In article, uh, in our, um, Article 8.
Okay.
Accessory, or the, the, uh, conditional use standards for accessory structures.
Okay.
So that's where you find it.
Okay.
But I will
In Article 8.
I will look back at that and make sure that I actually did that, and... All right. Get the notes down. Hopefully, Elaine, you're taking better notes than me, because one of us has got to remember all these things. All right.
Can I just ask you, just in that land use table, I'm sorry to switch around here, but is there a key in there that shows between the, uh, special exception permit and conditional uses and permitted uses? Because I don't see any legend or key that, for someone who goes on there, that they can see what those...
Well, it's, uh, it's actually in the heading line. The, the key to what those means is up in the heading line of the, uh, land use table.
I, I mean, I didn't see anything there, but unless I, I mean, I just printed that out. I didn't see the, that's just the land use.
Definitely not as the one you printed.
Okay.
So I don't, it used to be... I will, uh, look and see what happened. That's probably a glitch in the printing process. Yeah, that's, uh, uh, one of the things I remember you brought up, uh, in last month's meeting, had to do with accessory dwellings showing up in some of these, uh, district standards.
Right.
And when I got back, they were, it was removed from my document, but somehow it was, uh, the,
Printed out.
Apparently, the, the next-to-last version of the document got posted and not the final one, so that
Okay.
was just a, uh, error on my part. All right. Separation of structures, uh, we don't specify it in our current ordinance, but, um, I added that 10-foot minimum, uh, between, uh, detached accessory structures and habitable structures, uh, in response to requirements of our building code. As long as it's required, I figure if we just let them know upfront, it would be better.
So it's not specified in the existing ordinances then?
No.
So you could put...
But what, what could happen now? Someone could propose something, put a, a shed in next to their house, not realizing that it can't go there. And then, when Tim Spraker comes to do an inspection, they got to move it. And so, to try and avoid situations where people have to do expensive fixes, uh...
So, is this what the building code is then?
Yeah, 10 feet.
And 15, okay.
And, and basically, between, uh, end units, uh, the 15 feet actually responded to an existing provision in our ordinance on townhouses. And so, that, that was a way to preserve a standard from the townhouse section in our current ordinance. But, uh, building code is 10 feet.
Okay.
And basically, that's seen as a, a distance that if, if there's a fire, uh, the fire and rescue can get their equipment through and be able to protect the structure. And it's also, uh, a distance that in fire studies, generally, if there's 10 feet separation, it reduces the likelihood that that fire will jump from one building to another. Unless it's windy like California. All right. The minimum floor areas for dwellings, that's stayed the same. Although, I did, just to simplify, eliminate the, the lot coverage requirement. You know, so basically, it's just to simplify the ordinance. And we, uh, kept the, the frontage requirement the same as the existing ordinance, except uh, we moved the requirement from the setback line up to the, uh, to the right-of-way. Because, uh, under the current ordinance, and, uh, people have used this as an exception to basically have a flag lot, and there seemed to be a lot of opposition to flag lots, so, uh, currently, you could build a narrow accessway to a parcel, and then just consider the setback line, the point where you widen out enough to have the minimum width. And this would preclude that.
Is there anything else about R2?
Um, I have other questions, but, you know, I don't want to keep this, uh, here forever. I can call John on the other questions, because...
Um, and feel free to, uh...
Okay.
We are, uh, we've been at this an hour and a half. Uh, if, we can, before we move on to R3, we could either table that for next month's meeting, or uh, we can endure more. I don't know, it's up to you.
How many, how many changes between R2 and R3 are there? Can we quickly go through R3?
Uh, we can.
Or is it something that we can't quickly go through?
I think if we can table it for next, I mean, that's just my opinion, you know?
And then also, on the next month, we'll, uh, be able to dive in deeper on the issue of accessory structures and whether they can work in side yards and, and really some other issues. It just happens that, in the last three weeks, some very complicated questions on accessory structures have come up. And, uh, I'd like to hear what, what you all have to say about them, but I hope we'll have a time to really dedicate to that as opposed to trying to brush through it.
Right, so in your, uh, before the meeting, John went around and placed these at your station, but you didn't have them before the meeting, so between now and the next meeting, you may want to just look through this colorful packet here. And when you, and when you come to the next meeting, you can have your ideas and thoughts about side yards and accessory structures. And whatever we, whatever we want to do with side yards, if we want to do anything with accessory structures, where that will live will be in the conditional use standards for accessories. So, good news is because we've already structured the UDO to have accessory structures as a conditional use. If we want to get detailed about what types of accessory structures, or any sort of details like that, we've got a place to capture that, and we can...
I don't know if there's anything else that, uh, is a must-cover item for tonight. I I think that, um, yeah, basically, we have the R3 and the accessory structures items left, so we can work on those next month.
So are we going to address David's additional questions next month, or is he going to get with you?
That depends on whether he asks them here.
I didn't want to bore the, bore everyone here, but I can call John on it, but it was just to go from the existing to the, uh, to the new UDO, just to ask questions on that, basically, but I mean, I can carry on and ask questions if you like, whatever you guys want to do, I don't mind. Or I can call him separately and speak to him about it. I, I don't mind.
Well, anything that comes up, if, if it, uh, if it's not just a simple answer... Well, anything that comes up, if, if it, if it's not just a simple answer about a grammar error or something like that, we'll bring it back...
For the next meeting.
To this group for the next meeting.
Okay. I'm, I mean, I'm good with that.
Yeah, we won't, we won't leave you out of anything, even if you wish we would. All right.
Is there any other further discussion before we adjourn this meeting? It's 7:30, and the Planning Commission meeting is adjourned.